Happy Holidays. Welcome to West Valley City Council Meeting. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present this evening. And our opening ceremony tonight will be led by Councilmember Corey Rushton.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good that it's all friends in the audience tonight, as well as my fellow councilmembers for this special opening ceremony. Because during our opening ceremonies, we often either augment it or feature a pledge of allegiance. And it's an important thing to do on a civic occasion, and we've done it numerous times in this chamber. The one thing that happens, from my perspective, when we do a pledge of allegiance is that I stand here, and in my right ear, I get to hear Councilmember Christiansen, and in my left ear, I get to hear everybody else, and the rest of councilmembers in the audience. And one of the things that I've experienced in doing this is that Councilmember Christiansen recites the pledge of allegiance a little bit different from the rest of us. And to point it out specifically, it gets into the point where it's, "And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God." And I think maybe just when we're kids, or the pentameter of it, it's "one nation, pause under God." Councilmember Christiansen recites it, "one nation under God," but no pause. And so, I asked him the other day, I said, "Councilman, I noticed when we do the pledge of allegiance, that you don't do a pause or put a comma in the 'one nation under God.' Is this part of your scouts' training, or what?" And so, we ended up having a discussion on the finer points of the pledge of allegiance. Basically, came to learn a lot of interesting things about it. With Councilmember Christiansen's expertise on it, it led me into some further research. And it came back to an old 1940's television program where the late Red Skelton on his program said that he related a story of his teacher, Mr. Lazwell, who had felt his students had come to think of the pledge of allegiance as merely something to recite in class one day. So he says, "I've been listening to you boys and girls recite the pledge of allegiance all semester, and it seems as though it's become a bit monotonous to you. If I may, may I recite it and try to explain to you the meaning of each word? I, me, an individual, a committee of one, pledge, dedicate all of my worldly goods to give you without self-pity. Allegiance, my love and my devotion. To the flag, our standard, our glory, our symbol of freedom. United means that we have all come together. States, individual communities that have united into forty-eight states, forty-eight individual communities with pride and dignity, a common purpose. And to the Republic, a state in which sovereign power is invested in the representatives chosen by the people to govern. And the government is the people, and it's from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people. For which it stands, one nation. One nation, meaning so blessed by God. Indivisible, meaning incapable of being divided. With liberty, which is freedom, the right of power to live one's life without threats, without some fear of retaliation. And justice, the principle of equality of dealing fairly with others for all, which means boys, girls, it's as much your country as mine." So after this program, the term "under God" was added, as well as two more stars to the flag. And so, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve with the councilmembers and the little things that I learned from them, and that helped me have a better understanding of the great nation we live in. And so, I would like to ask Councilmember Christiansen to stand and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Would you all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I might add, Mayor, it was my district superintendent that told us as principals to lead it that way. So I had to learn from my teacher.
Well, thank you both. Item number four tonight is special recognition. So we do have a special recognition. We have Senator Karen Mayne with us in the audience. And Senator, great to see you twice in one week.
That's right.
Is there anything you'd... Would you like to come up microphone and say anything briefly? We're always honored to have you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. I'm not here to deem you on 5600 West tonight, because I have been here several times. And I drove by the other day, and it's clean. Thank you very much. So if they don't call me, then I don't call you. I've come today, you have a piece of legislation for, what do you, a statute issue? Tell me your name, ordinance, okay? And I come before you, because I think this is a piece of good legislation. We worked with it in Taylorsville. And I'll tell you the history, Salt Lake City has it. They have, and I could share that with you, they have a bid of $104,000 or $50,000 in Taylorsville, it's mandated. Murray, they're passing this. And so, in Salt Lake County, they have this. What it is, and we've had issues in it in the state of Utah. Senator Niederhauser, which is the president of our body now, passed a piece of legislation that came in force in July. And it was not the lowest bid, it was the best bid. And we have been burnt by my favorite flatiron down in Orem, where that job wasn't completed. And it is just, the amount just gave me maybe $15,000 or $17,000 a day. And so, we need to make sure that what we do, and the second biggest city, I'm here to speak for this piece, this ordinance that you'll be discussing. In my duty as Senator, I have passed misclassification of workers. This piece of legislation, I have sent to many states. And in my eyes, it is a landmark piece of legislation. We've had a problem in the state of Utah. It's more like a cancer, where companies are saying that their employees are owners, and they're not. So my senators in the House passed this piece of legislation. So I'm well aware of companies, good companies, we've granted today, good companies that take care of business, they pay taxes, they have decent conditions. I have had whistleblowers come to me, and I have met them on the job site. I have met them at 11 o'clock at night. And they have horror stories of no water. They have horror stories, which is true. And this has gone to the Labor Department, this is going to work for services, no water, no place to go to the bathroom. They work sixteen hours, and they take them someplace else to work again. So misclassification of workers is working. And so, this is why I come to you. The other reason is I sit on the Veterans Task Force. And we are looking at ways to help our veterans. As these wars wind down, we're going to have more veterans here. So as I understand it, your ordinance has a piece in there about veterans? The others do too. And they're a little different. Every one of the entities have a little different. But the gist is, you don't take lower bid, the lowest bid, you take the best bid. So what this does is protect good companies, because they pay taxes. And they don't, if they pay in cash, they make sure that those people are paid, and they pay taxes. They keep receipts. I have, the stories I could tell you are amazing. There's one story, there's a company that pays in cash, and then said, "Well, give me $100 back, and I'll pay your taxes." Now, I'm no brain surgeon, but I know that if there's not a receipt of being paid, they're not going to pay tax, they're just going to take it. So these are horror stories of some of the companies, not that we deal with those, but those people are out there. So this ordinance is in front of you, that is, and I've talked to Wayne about the issues. But I think it's just something in place, where the other entities have come forward and passed something as this, that we look at that company, to we make sure that we are, we have, in our community, many of our people work for these companies. We make sure they pay their taxes. We make sure that they're credible. We make sure that when we hire someone, it's a credible company, and they're going to take care of business. I think as the second biggest city, and we're growing, we need to be a lantern to good practice. I think that we need to say, "Hey, we know right from wrong, and we know good from bad." Like I say, the state of Utah, this came in to be in July, because we realized that we need to make sure, we look in to see if the companies aren't licensed, if they can take care of the job, and if they're, whatever that duty or work that we offer to them, that they have the credibility and the ability to do this for us. I'm speaking for Mayor Wall. He's not here today, so I can say what I want. But it was passed in Taylorsville, and they went through the same, not arguing, but the kind of maneuvering to make this happen. This is why I'm here. I support this, because I have seen it. And I have passed several pieces of legislation like misclassification of workers, and it's passed in the Senate, and it's passed in the House. So I hope that you'll look at this, and disinterbidding, you know, your process. We get the best, and we make sure that we treat workers and reward good companies that pay taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Well said, and we always appreciate having you here. We come to item five tonight, which is the approval of our minutes. We have the minutes of November 27th for our consideration. Does anyone who'd like to make a motion there?
I'll defer approval.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
They pass. We come to item six, which is our comment period. We've had one person sign up to speak during the comment period today, Mr. Kyle Christiansen.
I just signed up in case I need to speak for the development application that I'm on the agenda for.
Okay. We will note your presence, and when we get to item nine, new business, if there's any questions, we may call on you, and if not, we may not, so.
Approve it, please.
A succinct speech, but a powerful one. Thank you. We come to item seven tonight, which is our ordinances. And the first one is related to one Senator Mayne just talked about, ordinance 12-46. And we did discuss this and all the other items in our study meeting last week, but just to review, make sure we're on task, Mr. Kyle, 12-46, please.
Thank you, sir. And I won't go into any length to reintroduce it. Senator Mayne did a good job of that, and council has discussed this previously. The only extra comment I would make is that the actual change is basically outlined in the language you have before you.
Okay, thank you. Council, you have before you 12-46. Any comments or a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment and then a motion, if I may.
You're in order.
So, you know, I appreciate the good Senator coming down to speak to us on this and giving us the state's perspective on, we don't spend quite as much money as the state does, but we also need to make every little bit of it count. And so, it's good to see that the state, as well as some of our neighboring and sister cities, have picked up on ways to improve their procurement process to the providers. And, you know, I know there are many of the firms that we've worked with in our state, or in our city, that, you know, they do many of these things already, and are responsible, and have done quality work, and a great job. And so, I think, you know, some might say, you know, "Why is this, why is it necessary? Or, you know, why are we jumping so far out in front of this?" And, you know, I think there's a flip side to the coin on this, is that we do have so many firms that do participate in these socially desirable practices of having drug testing, and veterans hiring practices, and job training. And we've come to the point where, you know, we really can't sit on the fence anymore, and it's either come to a point where we need to say, "Yes, these are important things that our city does honor." Because if we just keep the status quo and stay the same, we're basically saying the opposite, that we're showing a preference to the firms that don't participate in some of these, some of these practices and opportunities. So I think it's a good thing, you know, happy that the staff was able to work up something that, you know, gives them the tools to be able to work through our procurement process, but, you know, still being flexible to meet the needs of the city. And so, Mayor, I would move approval of ordinance 12-46.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. We have a live motion before us, 12-46, regarding not just the lowest bidder, but the best bidder, as it was phrased earlier. Any discussion of this motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to speak to this proposed ordinance change, if I may.
Okay, please.
I don't know if the Senator has had the opportunity to read this four-sentence proposed ordinance change. I agree with what the Senator has said tonight, and with what has been expressed also by Councilman Rushton and staff, as we discussed this last week. However, this ordinance does not say best bid. We already have a policy to hire the lowest responsible bidder, not just the lowest bidder, so it makes no change or improvement there. Does not meet any expressed goal that I see. Includes now big undefined considerations that can be changed bid-by-bid proposal, and I think opens us up to litigation. It tries to address, in a couple of sentences, that certain things are important, such as safety, drug testing, job training, those things are already mandated by voluminous OSHA regulations, which our state enforces. It addresses health insurance, which is a hot topic, which is already mandated by the federal government, through Obamacare. It addresses nondiscrimination, which is already, the law of the land is already mandated. In my opinion, this is not a necessary ordinance, it's an additional layer of government intrusion on business practices. And without really even defining, or explaining anything, just making these considerations a possible reason to accept or not accept a bid when we're already looking for the lowest responsible bidder. It does not address in any manner the owner LLC issue that we have, where contractors are making everybody an owner, so they don't have to have any withholdings. It's not addressed that in the least. It does not include what I've advocated since joining this council a few years ago, that every contract include a requirement that the only those with a federal right to work be employed. That is not addressed here. Does address veterans, and I would be the last to speak against veterans. We all love veterans. We all think they should have opportunities, and I believe they do. I think by making a preference for veterans, I haven't heard any testimony that they are being discriminated against. And anytime we create an affirmative action for any group of people, no matter how defined, the other side of that coin is discrimination against those who do not qualify. And for that reason, I'm going to vote against this proposed four-sentence change to our bid process.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Questions for the staff, or councilmember?
Well, I just tend to agree on some of the issues, especially the safety. To me, it's just a little too vague. I would rather have said, you know, safety, testing, training, you know, just, to me, it needs to be more specific. And a lot of the things that Steve mentioned, I agree with, as far as being more specific and not being quite as vague.
A question I have for staff. Mr. Kyle, what dollar point does a project need to go out to bid, under our rules?
Mayor, that depends on the type of the project, and the level of approval that any particular entity along the chain of approval has. So for example, for myself, I can approve anything, $30,000 or less, in terms of a procurement decision, which I don't have to go get bid. At least, if my memory rings off the top of the head, there may be exceptions to that. Anything above that has to be approved by the council. And depending on the type of services being acquired, the type of projects being approved, that also varies.
Sure. Let me ask another question. Is there ever a time where there's a bid that does not come before the council? Do we ever bid on a project, and then the staff picks the winner, and on they go? Or does it always come before the council to engage in the contract?
That's a good question. I don't think so. I'm trying to think of specific instances where, like I say, I have a decision authority, and so does a department head, level even further down that, at diminishing dollar amounts. But any bid product, any bid project that we went up for, an RFP, or a construction project, that sort of thing, that I can think of, at least right off the top of my head, would come before the council.
So I would think that, yeah. Because if we're going into a contract as a city, it does need to come through us, which a bid would be.
Now, there are instances where we don't even have to go get a bid for even higher amount of dollar value projects. For example, if they happen to be a service or a good that's already approved on the state bid, then we wouldn't have to go out and bid that.
Or if they're sole provider.
Sole provider is also another instance.
Because I empathize with some of the concerns that were expressed. I guess, to me, at the end of the day, on a practical level, what this does is it gives our city leaders more flexibility, and we've all seen it where a bid comes in, and if we're not the lowest, we'll always ask the staff, "Now wait a minute, why are we going with this guy instead of this guy?" And we demand an explanation, and that would certainly continue. And this just gives them more options there to persuade us, as the seven policymakers, that this is indeed the best bid. And so, although there is some vagueness there, it gives me great comfort that it still ultimately has to come before a majority of this body, before any bids approved, and a contract entered in. And as a policymaker, I like that flexibility that it gives us to encourage positive behaviors of those that we choose to work with.
Well, and it gives us, you know, it's a little bit of oversight on the front end, because it's saying what we want, what we value, as being a responsible bidder, but then it gives us, we're suddenly responsible on the back end, to actually approve, you know, set bid. And that's why I think some of the beauty in this is that, you know, I mean, we're kind of hearing, "Well, it's too vague." And then, on the other hand, it's, you know, it's, we need, but we don't want it to be too specific and be too burdensome. That's why I think this accomplishes it perfectly, is that it says, "Here's, you know, what we value in giving preference to providers," but yet, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis for when the executive staff is out doing a bid, and then they can incorporate, "Here's how we're going to do safety training into..." You know, if it's, you know, a road project, it's always going to be a different safety training thing than...
Well, we're going to say, "We want you to follow the law," which includes the OSHA regulations, and they're going to have to follow that anyway. And are we going to say, "You have to follow more than what OSHA mandates?" Are we going to say, "You have to have better insurance than Obamacare mandates?" We're going to say, I mean, all I see this as is a pretext for us to be able to disallow some bidder, and then get sued later, when really, we're not adding anything to the pot. When we've had a bid come in, and we don't, it seems to me, about half the time, we don't take the lowest bid, and we ask why, and the staff has a good answer. Why this was the lowest bid, but it's not the bid we're taking, because we don't think they can do the job for that money, we don't have any history with them, we couldn't find anybody that says they're a good contractor. You know, I think we, I think we're creating a cure for, that isn't really a cure for a problem that we don't really have. Can I cut you off, Tom? Sorry.
Oh, that's fine, Stephen. I just wonder about, should we send this one back to study meeting, and we can study about the wording here?
Well, that's not the motion currently on the table. The motion is to prove it as it's written, and if, and of course, depending on what the vote does on this, someone could always make that motion to have the staff work it up again, or something else.
I was at a presentation recently that was talking about bids, and inspections, and everything else. And this entity that was inspecting the job site, the bidder had promised that, yes, they were following all the OSHA regulations, everything else, they were doing what they were supposed to be doing. As the inspector went out, he told them to stop work in one specific trench, because they hadn't shored up the sides of the trench. And the guy who was doing the shoring was down in the trench, trying to guide in these shores. And he kept, the inspector just kept telling him, "Get out of there, get out of there." They were following all the OSHA regulations. Well, when the inspector finally got the guy out, the trench caved in within five seconds of the guy coming out. And they were saying, "Well, this is the way we've done it all the time. This is what OSHA says we can do." But the, you know, we would have been doing a heavy rescue on him if he had stayed in there, doing what he was told he could do. So I think, you know, yes, we have the OSHA regulations, and, but OSHA doesn't come out and inspect everything all the time, they inspect afterwards. And so, I think we need to be ahead of the game in our side, in order to say, "This is what we need to do. We have to do the safety training. We have to have the company doing the safety training, so they know what they're doing too."
My understanding is how this works is, as Company A and Company B are applying for a job for a bid, and let's say, all things being equal, one of them has a super program of recruiting and helping to put to work veterans. This gives us the flexibility to say, "You know what? We're going to tip the scales a little bit for them, because they are going the other way to recruit and put veterans to work." And the same on down the line with these other things. If you have a company that says, you know, "We go above and beyond to make sure our employees' health insurance is taken care of," or our training, we can demonstrate that our training, we follow the Six Sigma process, or whatever, and so we're a safer construction company than the other guys. I think this gives us some flexibility, that we can say, "Okay, we're going to make that decision, in part, based on some of these other items." And so, I do like that flexibility it gives us.
But if safety record is what you're aiming for, I'd rather it's safety record, safety training. Safety is just so vague that I agree, it's just not going to get us what I think you're asking for.
And it's just another instance of government knowing better than the people that are actually in business, and creating another level of regulations, another thing they have to jump through, another thing they have to worry about in their operations. It may be a perfectly great company that just doesn't have a policy about hiring veterans, because it's a family business, and there just aren't veterans. It may be a perfectly good company that has a perfect safety record, that exceeds OSHA regulations, but for some reason, their policy isn't what we think it ought to be. And as an elected body, you know, I'm not in favor of really bigger government, greater intrusion, greater mandates, and that's all I hear. And these four sentences don't accomplish, in my mind, anything that's needed to be accomplished, except give us a pretext to deny bids on a bid-by-bid basis, that I think is dangerous.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, those that are worried about legal problems, legal problems isn't going to come from the noted four sentences of an ordinance. It's going to come from the request for bids document, that will spell these things out to some other points of what exactly a safety program is. And so, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, we're maybe making this a little bit harder than it needs to be, to where, you know, this is the policy statement of this body, and the actual nuts and bolts legal things get down to the request for bids from it. And, you know, to Tom's point is that, you know, I don't see this as the be-all, end-all of everything. I mean, as was pointed, there's going to be federally mandated health insurance, it'll kick in in 2016. So, you know, maybe that doesn't apply in 2016 on this anymore. And Tom, I, you know, I would say, you know, to those that, you know, that I think it's fully anticipated, that, you know, as we, as we roll this out, as well as Murray in Salt Lake and Taylorsville, that they've had their successes, that there's going to be the things that, you know, help us to define moving it forward, and that there might be something, you know, down the road, that we do need to have it, very specific in ordinance, which, you know, Salt Lake City, if you look at theirs, it's very defined on some things. And maybe, you know, Wayne comes back to us and says, "You know, we bid out some of this stuff, and, you know, maybe, you know, to the intent of this ordinance, it really needs to be spelled out and defined." And, you know, I'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but I don't think, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater on, you know, a good step forward to where, you know, we've talked about some of the businesses. I mean, frontrunner opened the other day, they said, "On, you know, ahead of schedule and under budget." And the firms attribute it to the fact that, you know, they just weren't in there to do it as cheaply and as cutthroat as possible, but they had some of these policies in place of having drug testing, of having work safety programs, work training problems, they had a quality frontrunner project that was, you know, finished. So, I mean, it's not that, you know, firms are out there also with our experiences of the state and our neighbors, you know, crying against it. They're actually saying, you know, "This is a good thing, because, you know, it's showing us that, you know, that, you know, these things that we're doing are important to cities, and that they're helping attribute to having things be on time, and ahead of schedule, and under budget."
And I think you just made my point, Mr. Rushton. The mayor says, "Well, we'll get to vote on these things when they come to us," and that's true. But we won't have any review of the bid. And as these bids go out, with different language on each bid, we have no control over that. We've just given some vague direction, that we want you to consider these things, you may consider these things, sometimes you don't have to, other times. And that's exactly my point. Thank you.
Well, we're putting it on the front end and on the back end.
No, because we're allowing, for lack of a No, because we're allowing, for lack of a better term, bureaucrats to put together a body that they think corresponds with our intent in this ordinance that we don't ever see and we don't ever vote on. And when the bids come back on that, it's too late.
But we do see it. It's not too late. We vote on it at the end.
Well, we vote on whether we're going to approve this.
Right, and I'm just saying, it's, it's, it makes it a lot easier for me to vote on this, knowing that on the front end, that we've said, hey, these things are important for us, and so that some of those things have been weeded out. So, when I'm looking on the back end, it's, you know, not as, you know, it's a little bit easier thing, and we're not wasting anybody's time on stuff.
Well, if we vote no on the back end, we're wasting everybody's time. The bid's gone out and we're not going to accept it anyway.
To my point, thanks for making my point on that.
Okay, is there any? Any other comments or questions on this topic? Okay, then I will call the question. Ms. McHenry, let's do a roll call vote, seeing as there might not be unanimity on this one.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
Mr. Bueller?
No.
Mr. Few?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Wender?
Aye. The ayes have it, and that ordinance does pass. We come to item eight tonight, resolution 12-160. Mr. Pyle, please introduce this one.
Thank you, sir. So, this resolution of the city council would authorize issuance and sale of $8.5 million in sale tax revenue bonds. You'll remember, we discussed this last week, and the, the amount might be not familiar to you. This is actually a lower amount than we saw in the original parameters resolution. You'll remember, we were talking about the fact that in addition to the two refunding items, which we are going out for, for bond refinancing for, we might have or want the availability to go out to some other needs. For example, I think we've talked about fleet needs, could have been fire, could have been light fleet, I can't remember. Anyway, we will have needs like that coming up, and we wanted to include in the parameters resolution, the capacity and the ability to bond further for that. I think we also told you that we were kind of doing that in a quick timeframe because we weren't exactly sure of what the parameters were of all our opportunities out there for us and options for making that happen. Upon further review, it looks like there are other alternatives that would be cheaper than adding issuance cost to this particular issue, for example, and that's why we've reduced it to the 8.5 million. So, the 8.5 million under which the parameters resolution would allow strictly applies to the two refunding projects that we were talking about last week. So, that's the animal controlled shelter, along with the police storage building that was constructed here about three years ago, along with one piece of the Maverick Center refinanced, or financing that was done a number of years ago.
Hey, thank you, sir. Any discussion or motion on 12-160?
So, no new taxes.
No increase.
No increase, it's a refinance to save $600,000.
That's correct, and also in the same term that, that they fall currently under. So, no extension either of that.
Good and good.
Mayor, I'll move for approval of resolution 12-160.
Second.
Okay, thank you all. Any discussion of that motion?
Anytime we can save money.
Yeah, it's a good, good move. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That one does pass unanimously. Let's come to one item of new business tonight, application S-1-2008, for which Mr. Christensen has patiently waited for.
Thank you, sir. So, we have a final plat approval, and as you noted, and as Mr. Christensen noted as well, he's here. Do you have any questions? This is a fairly simple project before you. It's a, it's located at 3878 South, 5200 West. It's on approximately 2.2 acres and is for six lots that are being planted on that property.
Okay, thank you. We appreciated the staff and the applicant working with the Bronx on the tailwater issue and some of the other things, so that the planning commission did approve it. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
Move for approval, resolution 12-160.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion?
I think we've already done 12-160.
Oh, excuse me. It's a good one, and I would like to vote on twice. Yeah, S-1-2008.
All refuse to recognize your motion. Okay. S-1-2008, do we have a second on this?
Second.
All right, now we're in. Thank you.
You know, we, oftentimes in this body, we talk about tricky pieces to develop, and I mean, I think everybody comes and says, oh, this is a tricky piece and that, but this one really is a tricky piece and has had to go through many different stages of the review and, and other processes, I guess. What's the one I'm thinking of, Tom, that your, that your wife sits on?
Order of adjustments.
Order of adjustments. All of this, yeah, all of the above, and so, like I said, it's good that everybody was able to come together to have a win-win on this.
Just another comment. I've had many of these residents to the, to the north of this property, they've had me over their homes and wondered when they could put their backyard fences up and waited for this to happen so that they could actually do that because of the easement that was on the backside of their property to allow access, so they're going to be very grateful to be able to finally put their fences up after seven or eight years of waiting, so this is a very good thing.
Okay, any other comments? And we'll call the question. All in favor of approving S-1-2008, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Despite the name of the project. Okay, item number 10 tonight is a motion for executive session. I understand from the city manager that a motion for executive session to discuss potential pending litigation, as well as the disposition or acquisition of real estate would be in order at this point. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of executive session for those reasons, say aye.
Aye.
And we will head into executive session. Wayne, you want us to gather around the little table?
Do we want to do RDA first?
We can do that as well.
Oh.
Yeah. It's RDA. Are we going to do what RDA?
We want to do RDA first.
Yeah, yeah, to do.
We amend the motion that the executive session be convened after the RDA meeting?
Do we need the motion on that? Okay, well, this meeting, this meeting is adjourned except for the executive session, which will resume after the RDA due for logistical and practical purposes.
I'd like to call the order, the special meeting of the RDA. Roll call showing that all members are present. We have one resolution tonight. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you. Pardon me. Thank you, sir. We have a property acquisition that we would like to accomplish if, at the, for the agency's approval, our pleasure. That's at 3026 West Lehman Avenue, in the amount of $150,000 for a, plus the closing cost for a single family residence at that address.
Thank you. Is there a motion or discussion?
I'll move for approval.
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I would.
Might be another despite the name.
Right. We'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor of approving resolution 12-22? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting.